So we're ready to get started. Good evening, everyone. It is seven thirty-two on June second, two thousand and twenty-one, and let us start with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Martha Tendence?
Trustee Fritchie?
President.
Trustee White?
President.
Trustee Lopez?
President.
Trustee Casada?
President.
Mayor Levin?
Present.
Okay, are there any mayor and trustees announcements?
I'm sure there might be. Anybody?
Something.
Go ahead.
This morning, we had a flag raising ceremony for the Juneteenth flag. And Juneteenth marks the celebration of the end of slavery on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, and it's Juneteenth is rapidly is actually, so June nineteenth is the actual day, but we're going to be flying the Juneteenth flag all month down at Market Square. So there was a great program put on, and it was organized by the Juneteenth Council, and those are four local women who did a great job, Althea Goodson, Diana Lemon, Juanda Dabs, and Joyce Sherrock Cole, our village historian, and some members of Austin, my brother's keeper, were also there, members of local clergy, George Latimer was there, Dana Levenberg, so and representatives of other elected officials, and it was it was a great ceremony, and we're actually, I think, the first municipality in Westchester to fly the Juneteenth flag, I believe, and it's actually a state and county holiday as well, so great job to the Juneteenth Council, and it reinforces the importance of our African-American community here in Austin, and that whom we greatly value, and so that was a it was a great, a great ceremony.
Thank you. Any other announcements, Dana? Great. Okay, anyone else? Not seeing.
Mayor, if I may?
Oh, please.
I just want to piggyback on what Dana mentioned. I was actually, was in order to actually be part of that ceremony as well. And so it was really moving, a lot of the words that were said. So I know Jamie did his Facebook Live, and I'm sure is somewhere in I've page as well, and also on our website. But I just want to jump into a different topic of a conversation, which is, we haven't, Omar hasn't said anything in a while in regards to COVID and the vaccines and wearing masks and everything else. I do want to give a big thank you to Austin. And it doesn't matter where in Austin, if you're in the village, in the town, in the corporate area, you know, one of the the numbers that I have seen so far coming from the county is how much, how many people actually had got vaccinated in our area, and is literally, I want to say ninety-nine point nine 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 percent based on the numbers that I have seen on the Westchester County's website. So I really want to thank our community to comment out again and being the first ones that I haven't seen any other community, unless the ones that I have that I have checked. I haven't seen that they're that close to a hundred percent being vaccinated. So that's a big plus. The other one is, if you look at, I saw something that that was also posted on, I think, Senator Elijah on his Facebook page, and it was comparing Westchester County with Brooklyn County, and actually, Westchester County with, as a county, we are ahead as well. We are in a sort of in the green zone, I want to call it. So I want to thank everyone that is actually supporting that. So keep keep us safe and keep yourself safe and keep our children safe, you know, some people that cannot, some of the little ones cannot get vaccinated just yet, so they're still wearing a mask. My little seven-year-old, she's like wearing a mask all the time, so so I do want to thank that community for all the hard work that they have done, and I don't have any additional announcements, Mayor. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll just say thank you to trustee White and Deputy Mayor Casada. I think the village actually gave the the four women, thank you, who are starting the Juneteenth and got that rolling with the help of others, of course. The proclamation, it's it's really cool. I I work in Westchester, and I do drive through a couple of different communities. There are some Juneteenth celebrations happening, and Peekskill has had one, et cetera, but what's really great is that the flag will actually step for the month of June, which is great. It's always a great opportunity for education. To me, the most important things about all these events is not standing there and having pictures taken and making the speeches. It's actually that it memorializes milestones and that it gives opportunity for people to use it as a point of information and education about what is Juneteenth? What does it stand for? That to me is the most important piece. I come from sort of a background that talks about doing things from generation to generation. It's an oft quoted sort of idiom, and that's how I look at Juneteenth, the beginning of something. I'm hoping, I said this in the press release, that I hope that it becomes a tradition, that it goes on for a number of years, and I'd like to be helpful in that. In that vein, Friday, there will be also a flag raising that started with a couple of people putting a program together, and now has become part of the Austin traditionist to raise the pride flag based on that date is memory, the month of June is memorized. It's really a month for education and conversations and thinking about what else we can do to find common ground with people that really make up this country. And it really talks about, you know, gay pride is something to really think about very consciously. So that will be happening Friday as well. Also, I believe in Market Square, and trying to find on my computer the exact time that we're doing it. Jamie, if you could help me out?
Sure, it's nine AM on Friday, and it will also be Facebook Live as well, and the press is invited and so on.
Great. So really great stuff going on, great month of June. I'm super excited. Thank you also, Manny, for stepping in, Deputy Mayor for stepping in, Dana, but really, I'm super excited because I feel like June is the month that we're opening up again. And even though we do have to be very careful because people still do get sick from the virus, but I feel like businesses are beginning to open. I really encourage all of you to take every opportunity, as I have been doing with my own family, to really visit and spend money at our local restaurants, whether it's in the parklets, where it allows you to have more seating outside, enjoy the weather, or indoors, and really enjoy our parks. I thank all of the village staff for cleverly, as I got a note this morning from someone, said they went downtown and took a walk and didn't realize how many picnic tables have been put out by the village and how much they appreciate the fact that they can meet their friends down there. They live in apartment, they're a little nervous, and so I think it's just phenomenal that we, the village staff quietly, but powerfully, took it upon themselves to really create space for people, especially in the center of our community. So I thank you for that. And with that, I think we can move on to administrative reports.
Okay, village manager, candidate.
Thank you, Martha. Good evening, everybody. Earlier today, village engineer Paul Fraley and assistant village manager Maddie Zahatch interviewed two finalists for the environmental consulting work at two hundred Main Street. And as you may remember, this work is being primarily funded by a grant under the New York Main Street Program, and the RFP was broadly advertised, and twenty-eight minority and women-owned businesses, along with nine service-disabled veteran-owned businesses, were individually solicited. We will be asking for a special meeting next Wednesday, June ninth, to authorize the signing of a contract with the successful proposer, who will be guiding the village in the building's remediation in an effort to keep this very exciting project on track. Over the coming week, members of the management staff will be interviewing candidates for the position of Youth Services Director. That's that's the head of our youth bureau and the next step in establishing Austin's youth bureau. The caliber of applicant from whom we received resumes was truly impressive, and we look forward to making an offer to the successful candidate within the month of June to begin work this summer. Thanks again to the Board of Trustees for prioritizing and supporting the creation of the youth bureau, which will add some much-needed support for the younger residents of Austin as they work on college prep, career readiness, creative expression, and building self-esteem. As the downtown mobility and parking study work comes to a close, the village is interested in resident and business feedback on the recommendations our consultant and staff team have drafted. This Saturday, June fifth, between nine AM and eleven AM, the team from Nelson Nygaard will be at the Austin Farmers Market to get your feedback. Facilitators will be on hand to explain each recommendation and take your feedback in both English and Spanish. And if you can't make it to Saturday's market, we hope you will join the more formal presentation on Monday, June seventh, over Zoom. The presentation will be led at five thirty PM in Spanish and at seven thirty PM in English, and recordings will be made available to both, for both of the sessions, for all who wish to watch another day. This has been a tremendous team effort between our police department, DPW, our planner, the manager's office, and representatives from the BOT. And we are looking forward to hearing from our residents and our and the business community about how we plan to move forward to make Austin a safer and easier place to drive, park, walk, bike, and enjoy. Finally, this past Thursday, we celebrate the well-deserved retirement of Bob Chesna, who retired after nearly twenty-four years of service to Austin Recreation. Bob began his time in the rec back in nineteen ninety-seven, when he was hired as a senior recreation leader. He was soon promoted to the position of recreation supervisor, and over the past twenty years, Bob's work organizing the summer camp program and other events and programming has helped Austin's outstanding recreation program grow to what it is today. And many of Bob's colleagues and friends showed up to stress their appreciation. He will be missed, and we thank him for his service. That concludes my announcements for this evening.
Okay, Corporation Council, Stuart Cahan?
Thank you, Martha. Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. On tonight's agenda, there are three resolutions calling for public hearings with regard to local laws five, six, and seven, which deals with notice provisions for land use, subdivision, and telecommunications actions. It took a little longer to get here because one of them had to go to the planning board for its recommendation regarding a zoning text change, and that I'm glad to say has been taken care of. There is also a cabaret license before the board tonight with regard to the boathouse. And there are also two resolutions relating to Two Sherman Place. The first is the determination of significance with regard to the proposed zoning map change, and the second is the approval of the zoning map change, again, with regard to Two Sherman Place. And finally, there is a resolution authorizing the village manager to sign an intermunicipal agreement with Westchester County Department of Public Safety for their Stop DWI program. This is a continuation of an earlier IMA, and this IMA would run through December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-five. Also, this evening, I attended or participated in a Zoom sponsored by the New York State Bar Association dealing on the recently passed Marijuana Reform and Taxation Act, specifically with regard to its impact upon local municipalities. Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart Cahan.
Okay, Police Chief Kevin Sylvester?
Good evening. So this time of year, we ordinarily get involved in some additional traffic enforcement stuff. As Stuart mentioned, we have the Stop DWI grant coming up. In addition to that, we have a grant that we already have for clicker tickets. So over the past couple of weeks, we've deployed additional resources and been doing special enforcement, targeted enforcement for seat belts and speeding around the village. Couple days ago, we celebrated the retirement of Clarence Fisher, Lance Fisher, who many of you may not know because he worked midnights for many years, been a police officer here for more than twenty years, quietly contributed a great deal to this department, oftentimes more than most, was a defensive tactics constructor, a field training officer, most of the, just about every supervisor that we have here at some point was trained by him. So any of the good cops that we have here are because of his good work. Field training officers oftentimes the most undervalued or at least under-recognized people in our department. In addition to that, he also served in street crime and a number of other details. So he will be sorely missed after more than twenty years of service, but that will be one of what I suspect is a number of coming retirements. Two officers just graduated from police mountain bike school, a school that we try to get people to on a regular basis. Mountain bikes in our community tend to be more helpful than walking on foot. That detail does require us to have sufficient manpower, which with the vacancies that we have right now, we're going to do the best we can, but having more people qualified makes more people available. So two new officers for police mountain bike school. Tomorrow, we are slated to participate in a Know Your Right seminar, which has been canceled. That'll be postponed to next week. It's Star Bethlehem with ENU. That's Jermaine Smith's organization, Star Bethlehem and Home Run Against Drugs. That should include us, Westchester County Police, and New York State Police. On Friday, we've got people going to Career Day at AMD, and we've got some things in the works to celebrate graduation at Austin High School. Lastly, last week, I attended the International Association Chiefs of Police Public Information Officers Annual Training Session in Arlington, Texas. There, we covered a number of topics, including managing misinformation. This seminar, an opportunity to learn from many of the most, the larger agencies in the country, and those with some of the most high-profile incidents. To that end, we had the person hired to manage information for the city of Chicago during the Jussie Smollet incident. So we went through that one. We did, New York State Police did how to handle challenges between different government agencies during the Dannemora Prison Break. We had managing misinformation with Kansas City, Missouri, who has a relatively high crime rate, so they're they're pretty busy there, and with all the protests they've had. In addition to another number of other things, like social media ethics, we did on-camera training for all of the the people that attended this, as well as panels on strategic communications and intermunicipal work, and there was one more that was really relevant. I forget what the other, oh, and community outreach programs. So a really good program. I am the vice chair of that section for the ICP, so I help manage that program. And that is what we've got for tonight. Later in the meeting, I'll be coming on to talk about police reform at your request.
Thank you, chief. I'm glad you had. I hope the conference was useful beyond that, because you usually come back and talk about, you know, lots of, I wouldn't call it networking, but just hearing from police departments and chiefs around the country, being in New York, this youth state, but sometimes, you know, learning from other communities is great. So I'm glad to see you back, and there's any more things that you learn you want to share with the board, always feel free. In the past, you've brought back some speakers, et cetera, so I think that's great. Thank you. We're going to organization announcements. Announcements. Go ahead, Martha.
It's okay. Is there anybody here who would like to make an organizational announcement? Please raise your virtual hand if you want to say something.
See only two attendees. I'm not seeing hands.
No hands. Okay, so moving on to public comment and agenda items. Is there anybody here who would like to address the board on any of the resolutions on the agenda?
I am also, again, not seeing any hands.
Okay, see no one. We're going to move to village board resolutions. Approval of minutes, May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, resolved that the board of trustees of the village of Austin hereby approves the minutes of the May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one regular meeting as presented. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Okay. Comments? Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of minutes, May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, resolved that the board of trustees of the village of Austin hereby approves the minutes of the May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-one special meeting as presented.
So moved.
Comments? Not seeing any, Martha?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of voucher detail report, June second, two thousand and twenty-one, resolved that the board of trustees of the village of Austin hereby approves the voucher detail report dated June second, two thousand and twenty-one, and the amount of three hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-one cents. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Comments?
Yes, Mayor, if I may?
Please.
Nothing bad. Well, there was a couple of questions that I have for Dell, but that's not minor stuff, but I do want to bring that to, to, sometimes we don't talk about this enough. Sometimes we don't give credit to a lot of people of all the great work that they do. And this one, I want to take a minute, and Police Chief, you're going to have to help me with this one with a little bit more. So I tend to do vouchers over the weekends every two weeks, and I go through all this, the details of a lot of the, a lot of the stuff that we pay out. In this case, it was an amount of four thousand dollars. And it was reimbursement. So that caught my eye. So we usually, that is just a line. And I went back to the, actually, the backups, like we call it, of this kind of receives, and it's actually the work of Detective Chavez, who did, and actually was a scam, a nanny scam, that it was done. And probably you, you know this better, chief, than I do, but it was four thousand dollars. There's someone in our community was a scam, and this person sent four thousand dollars, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, the FBI was also involved. There wasn't, it was this whole investigation, I'm assuming, but Detective Chavez was the lead detector, and he was actually able to recuperate this four thousand dollars, which the money was sent to the police department, the police department deposited into the village account, and we're going to be sending this four thousand dollars to the victim of this scam. So help me fill out the blanks, chief, please.
Sure, that was published on Facebook about eight months or a year ago. I don't recall when the incident was, but it's a common scam that we have here. People get those phone calls and emails that say that they need to pay money for, I don't recall what this one was, so I don't want to misspeak on which scam it was, but it's a scam. Targets people. They call them granny scams, but people of all ages get caught up in them. In this particular case, we were able to track down the money, get it back, and good to hear the people are being reimbursed. I didn't realize it was still hanging out there, so.
Yeah, that's, that was something that I believe we just got back to it, and so we were able to, now again, the village has the money, we're going to be sending the money back to the resident of this. So again, that's the police work that we do, that our police department does. So I want to thank you and thank Detective Chavez to do all the hard work. Like I said, sometimes we don't, we don't get enough credit to our people, like, you know, that they don't, they don't see that. So thank you for that, chief. And that's my only comment, Mayor. I don't have anything else for this voucher portion of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Appointment to the Austin Arts Project, resolved that the board of trustees appoints the following individual to the Austin Arts Project term, June second, two thousand and twenty-one, through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, Tomiko Magorio. Do I have a motion?
Dana, would you like to maybe comment?
Yes, Tomiko is a dancer. She lives in the village. She has a dance company, the New Rising Sun Dance Company. She's done performances with Ted Daniels at the library, and so we're excited to have a dancer on the Austin Arts Project, and and to, we're continuing to look for more members, but we're going to get a good crew going, so I would like to welcome Tomiko.
How many more do you need? Yes, so I thank you so much for that. How many more do you need?
Three.
Okay, so we have a big arts community. Love it. It's one of my favorite things. I have a lot of favorite things. It's one of them, of living in this community and enjoying the talents. So if you want to raise your hand and get more involved in some of the committees, love to hear from, from folks about that. So Martha?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution approving cabaret license for the Up the River Restaurants Doing Business as the Boathouse Restaurant, forty-six Westerly Road, Austin, New York. Whereas pursuant to chapters one hundred and one hundred and seventy-one of the Code of the Village of Austin Code, the authorized representative of the business Up the River Restaurant Doing Business as the Boathouse Restaurant, forty-six Westerly Road, has presented an application to the village clerk as licensing officer for cabaret license for one to five performance, and whereas pursuant to sections one hundred dash three and one hundred dash five of the code, the village clerk has caused an investigation into said application, and after receiving the results of the investigation, the application has been referred to the board of trustees, which discussed the application at the May twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one work session. Now therefore be resolved that pursuant to the code, the board of trustees hereby approves a cabaret license for the Up the River Restaurants Doing Business as the Boathouse Restaurant, forty-six Westerly Avenue, for two thousand and twenty-one as follows. Up the River Restaurants Doing Business as the Boathouse Restaurant, days slash hours, Friday and Saturday, from eight PM to eleven PM. Type of music, one to five performers. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Comments? Well, we can't let this go without a comment about their lobster roll, which I do not eat shellfish, but I'm just going to tell you, award-winning. You can ask Dana White. It's posted on her Facebook when she goes there, and my favorite is the tuna burger. It's a great, it's a gem. We take our friends there. We're there this past Memorial Day weekend, so please go enjoy. The view is fabulous, and that's all I've got to say about it. We can vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Call for public hearing, Propose Local Law Five, two thousand and twenty-one, titled A Local Law Amending Chapter two hundred and seventeen Zoning of the Village of Austin Code. Resolved that the board of trustees of the village of Austin hereby calls for a public hearing to take place at seven thirty PM on June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, to consider Propose Local Law Five, two thousand and twenty-one, titled A Local Law Amending Chapter two hundred and seventy, zoning of the village of Austin Code, and be further resolved that the Propose Local Law Amends Section two hundred and seventy dash forty-nine, by requiring the notice of public hearings before the zoning board of peers shall be mailed ten days before the hearing date rather than the current five days, and be further resolved that the Propose Local Law adds a new article, fourteen notification signs, and be further resolved that as a result of the continuing state of emergency, and as a result of the executive orders issued by the governor, including executive orders two two-point-one and two two-point-one-on-nine, the public hearing will be conducted remotely via Zoom, and be further resolved that for those individuals who want to watch and or participate in the public hearing remotely, the following contact information is provided. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Any comments? This is actually to call a public hearing. So any comments?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Call for public hearing, Propose Local Law Six, two thousand and twenty-one, titled A Local Law Amending Chapter two hundred and thirty-three, subdivision of land of the Village of Austin Code. Resolved that the board of trustees of the village of Austin hereby calls for a public hearing to take place at seven thirty PM on June sixteen, two thousand and twenty-one, to consider Propose Local Law Six, two thousand and twenty-one, titled A Local Law Amending Chapter two thirty-three, subdivision of land of the Village of Austin Code, and be further resolved that the Propose Local Law adds a new article seven, additional notification procedure for preliminary and final plan approval, and be further resolved that as a result of the continuing state of emergency, and as a result of the executive orders issued by the governor, including executive orders two two-point-one and two two-point-one-on-nine, the public hearing will be conducted remotely via Zoom, and be further resolved that for those individuals who want to watch and or participate in the public hearing remotely, the following contact information is provided. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Comments on this one?
Martha, just one thing. It's final plat, P L A T, approval, not final plan approval. I will send you a revised version, but so amended, it can go forward. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 As amended, yeah.
As amended.
As amended. Opposed? Thank you. A call for public hearing, Propose Local Law Seven, two thousand and twenty-one, titled A Local Law Amending Chapter two forty-six, telecommunications of the Village of Austin Code, resolved that the board of trustees of the village of Austin hereby calls for a public hearing to take place at seven thirty PM on June sixteen, two thousand and twenty-one, to consider Propose Local Law Seven, two thousand and twenty-one, titled A Local Law Amending Chapter two forty-six, telecommunications of the Village of Austin Code, and be further resolved that the Propose Local Law Amends Chapter two forty-six, section nineteen, telecommunications publicly required, and be further resolved that as a result of the continuing state of emergency, and as a result of the executive orders issued by the governor, including executive orders two two-point-one and two two-point-one-on-nine, the public hearing will be conducted remotely via Zoom, and be further resolved that for those individuals who want to watch and or participate in the public hearing remotely, the following contact information is provided. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Comments on this one? Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Notice of determination of significance proposed zoning map change for Two Sherman Place, Austin, New York. Whereas on November 23rd, 2020, the Village of Austin clerk received from Two Sherman Place LLC, an application pursuant to Village Code section 270 dash 59, requesting a change to the village's zoning map, more specifically that the applicant's property located at Two Sherman Place identified in the Village of Austin tax map as section 89.16, block three, lot 88.1, currently zoned in the S75 Single Family Zoning District, be rezoned into the NC2 Neighborhood Center zoning district. And whereas pursuant to the Village Code section 270 dash 59, the application for zoning map change was referred by the board of trustees to the village's planning board for a report. And whereas the planning board issued its report to the board of trustees on February 23rd, 2021. And whereas on April 7th, 2021, the board of trustees opened a duly noticed public hearing on the proposed zoning map change, at which time members of the public addressed the board of trustees on the proposed map change. And whereas the public hearing, the proposed zoning map change was closed on April 7th, 2021. And whereas on April 21st, 2021, the board of trustees approved this resolution declaring itself as lead agency for the purpose of the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SEQ1, making a preliminary classification of proposed zoning map change was an unlisted action in that in accordance with the Village Code section 118 dash 60, the board of trustees shall make a determination of environmental significance based upon a completed short environmental assessment form, SEAF, the criteria set out in the SEQR regulations 617.7C. And whereas on May 10th, 2021, the applicant submitted a completed part one of the SEAF and subsequent their to village, that the director of planning completed parts two and three of the SEAF. And whereas, though the, as lead agency, the following issues were considered in making a determination of significance regarding the proposed zoning map change. Will the proposed zoning map change create a material conflict with an adopted land use planner zoning regulations? Will the proposed zoning map change result in a change in use or intensity of use of land? Will the proposed zoning map change impair the character of quality of the existing community? Will the proposed zoning map change have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area? Will the proposed zoning change cause an increase in the use of energy? Will the proposed zoning map change impact existing public water supplies and public wastewater treatment facilities? Will the proposed zoning map change impair the character of quality of importance in historic archaeological and architectural or aesthetic resources? The proposed zoning map change result in an adverse change to natural resources? Will the proposed zoning map change result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? Will the proposed zoning map change create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? And whereas it was determined upon viewing part one of the SEAF, the criteria mentioned above, including the criteria in SEQR regulations 617.7C, that there would either be no impact or small impact may occur. And whereas SEQR regulations 617.2Z defines negative declaration as written determination by a lead agency that the implementation of the action as proposed will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts. Now therefore be resolved, the board of trustees as lead agency with a proposed action zoning map change for Two Sherman Place from the S75 zoning district to the NC2 zoning district determines that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts. And be further resolved that the board of trustees issues a negative declaration and be further resolved that the negative declaration should be filed in accord with SEQR regulations section 617.12. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments on the board? Martha?
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Approval of zoning map change for Two Sherman Place, Austin, New York. Whereas since November 23rd, 2020, the village clerk received from Two Sherman Place LLC, an application pursuant to Village Code section 270 dash 59, requesting a change to the village's zoning map, more specifically that the applicant's property located at Two Sherman Place identified in the Village of Austin tax map as section 89.16, block three, lot 88.1, currently zoned in the S75 Single Family Zoning District to be rezoned into the NC dash two, but Neighborhood Center zoning district. And whereas pursuant to Village Code section 270 dash 59, the application for a zoning map change was referred to the village's planning board for a report. And whereas on February 23rd, 2021, the planning board issued its report to the board of trustees. And whereas a public hearing was duly noticed and subsequently opened by the board of trustees on April 7th, 2021, to consider the proposed zoning map change. And whereas as the public hearing, at the public hearing, members of the public addressed the board of trustees on concerns regarding the proposed zoning map change. And in addition, the board of trustees received and acknowledged written comments regarding the proposed zoning map change. And whereas the public hearing was closed on April 7th, 2021. And whereas the board of trustees conducted an environmental review of the proposed zoning map change and determined that the map change will not result in any significant adverse environmental impact. Now therefore be resolved, did the application but Two Sherman Place LLC, owner of the property at Two Sherman Place, Austin, New York, and identified on the tax map on the Village of Austin, as section 89.16, block three, lot 88, 1.1, to change the property zoning district from S75 Single Family to NC2 Neighborhood Central is granted. And be further resolved, the Village of Austin zoning map shall be amended to reflect the change approved herein and the amended zoning map shall be maintained by the building inspector and village clerk pursuant to Village Code section 270 dash six and New York Village Law Section 7 dash 706.5. Do I have a motion?
Oh, second.
Comments? So I just want to make it clear, this is, we have three things, the, two things that regard the same, um, area, the same location, Two Sherman Place. Stuart, do you want to just give a quick why there's two of them here? Why there are two pieces of legislation?
One is to conclude the environmental process and one is to approve the zoning map change.
Right. This is really just more for the public record because we read through these so quickly. We also discuss them usually week two, three, four weeks, um, prior, um, to these meetings. And it might not make sense to some people who might, uh, be looking at this in the future. So there's a related, um, issue here. Thank you, Martha.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Authorizing the village manager to sign an inter municipal agreement with Westchester County Department of Public Safety Stop DWI. Whereas the Stop DWI Patrol Project is an overtime added patrol effort to enforce a New York state vehicle and traffic laws against intoxicated and impaired driving DWI slash DWAI in Westchester County. And whereas the patrol project requires that that stop DWI patrol activity and a stop may be in addition to the participating police departments', police departments' normal and or routine patrol activity and assignment. And whereas the maximum amount payable to the Village of Austin by Westchester County is $8,400. And whereas the prior inter municipal agreement between the Village of Austin and Westchester County expired on December 31st, 2020, and the county has proposed a new agreement with a term from January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2025. Now therefore be resolved, the following review by the Corporation Council, the village managers authorized to sign the inter municipal agreement with Westchester County for the Stop DWI Patrol Project. Do I have a motion?
A move.
Second.
Any comments from anyone on this one? Not seeing any. Martha?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Fire department removal from active roles, resolved that the board of trustees of the Village of Austin hereby removes the following firefighters from the active roles of the Austin Fire Department. Austin Fire Police and Emergency Squad, Charles Italiano and Daniel Riley, and Austin Post Company number one, Peter Turtle and Ronald Duke. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Comments?
All those in, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Um, is there any continuing business of the board? Oh, sorry. Uh, there's a police reform and reinvention collaborative update.
That's continuing business.
That's continuing business. Yes. I messed that up and thought it was new business.
Okay, so in continuing business, uh, we're going to hear from both, um, Stuart Cahan Corporation Council and Chief Sylvester. This is in regards to the, uh, plan that was submitted, approved submitted by the board in April to the governor's office based on, um, months worth of work with, uh, the police reform, um, committee that was put together by the board trustees. This is a presentation by, uh, the chief and corporation council to the board. And so looking forward to hearing, uh, what progress we've made and, um, where we are.
Uh, okay, I'll lead off. Uh, thank you, uh, members of the board. The, uh, chief and I, uh, sent a, a memo to the board, uh, I believe it was yesterday, uh, relating to where things are with regard to implementation of, uh, portions of the plan. Uh, we, uh, are in receipt of the, uh, I guess the Google Docs, which has the, uh, list of all the different sections and recommendations as relates specifically to corporation council, uh, with, uh, uh, interaction of the chief. Uh, are primarily legislative changes relating to the civilian police complaint review board. Uh, those involve, uh, changes in the, uh, composition of the membership, uh, to a five-member civilian board with two non-voting police members, is also one civilian alternate. To change some of the definitions, uh, involving terms, what we have now of substantiated, unfounded, unsubstantiated, uh, codifying that the village corporation council, uh, would be in attendance at meetings and will act as, in essence, legal counsel to the, uh, board, uh, to the CPC RB. That there'll also be quarterly updates to the CPC RB, to, from the CPC RB chair or corporation council to the board of trustees. Uh, that the CPC RB would continue to be able to hold, uh, hybrid meetings, uh, or virtual meetings, uh, that, uh, records relating to complaints, uh, will be maintained, uh, by the police department until the CPC RB has concluded its review and made its determination, uh, that meetings can be held on any village property, but if in fact they're going to be held virtually, really doesn't matter. Uh, that the time for a complaint to be filed would be extended from 90 to 120 days from the date of the incident. Uh, and that the investigation of complaints would begin within 10 calendar days of the complaint being received and should be concluded, concluded within 30 days, uh, unless the OPD submits a written explanation, uh, to the CPC RB chairperson, uh, explaining the need for additional time. Uh, and there's also some changes vis a vis, uh, training, which, uh, would be legislative, uh, to make just three core areas of training required before any new member or alternate can participate. Those core mem-, those core areas being use of force, vehicle stops and constitutional issues. Other training areas would be considered as supplemental training and would be have to, would have to be con- concluded within six months of the, uh, person, uh, being eligible for, uh, participation in the board. Uh, with regard to the, uh, statutory changes, it is my anticipation that probably by the latter part of July, uh, there will be, uh, uh, you know, a lot of proposed local law presented to the board. I will first obviously, uh, discuss it with the chief in terms of changes that, uh, he thinks, uh, are appropriate with regard to this. Uh, the, this will allow, I think, a more overall review of, uh, chapter eight of our code, which does deal with the CPC RB. Uh, there are a number of issues which with, in relation to hearings that have, uh, that have been going on by the CPC RB on, on some matters, which I think have come to the fore, which can, uh, allow for certain changes as well. But, uh, it's my hope that by July to have something for the board to look at, uh, and probably either August or September to call for a public hearing so that those can be discussed, uh, considered by, uh, the board and by the public in a public hearing, and then ultimately be voted on by the board, hopefully sometime, uh, in September. So that's, uh, with regard to the, uh, particular legislative changes that, uh, are directed with regard to the, uh, to the corporation council. Uh, chief, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that or with regard to some of the topics that had your name next to them at this point, or I can.
Of course. So, uh, the legislative stuff is really going to be Stuart until it's done and then I'll, I'll be participating in, in reviewing that, I suppose. Um, but we haven't really got into that yet. As he said, that'll come later on. Um, as noted in the memo that was delivered to you, a lot of other things are already underway. Some of the things that should be noted in this plan are things that are already being done that I think are just intended to be codified. For instance, there's a, there's a recommendation that the police department be required to provide training to the civilian police complaint review board, which we've always done. So things like that are already underway. Um, I've asked Captain Giorgio to commence training for the newest member. I don't know where that's at. I need to follow up with him, but it's been assigned. Um, other things that are already underway, uh, number 12 had required reporting demographics, uh, to the extent that we'll be able to collect those from employees, it's not always possible to get those precise. And many people here are of a number of different demographics. Uh, we will share those. They're already reported to New York State, um, annually anyhow. Uh, the board is already on April 7th, received, uh, a report from me with arrest demographics that goes beyond, um, at least a portion of what's requested. I will say, as I said during the reform process, that some of the things that are, uh, included in here are, are likely illegal impossibility. For instance, that the, uh, plan requests us to provide demographics for stops. We're not permitted to, um, or people are not required to provide us with their demographics on those stops. So to the extent that we'll be able to collect those things, we'll share the information. But I think that it's, um, it, it's not so simple perhaps as maybe it was phrased in this report. Uh, other things that are in here, uh, they wanted names and contact information for command staff. Those will go up on the website right now. We are in process of taking headshots of all of our command staff as I think that it's more appropriate to put a photo next to them. Most people in our community, if they ask them about it, if you ask about a police officer, they may be able to describe someone or they recall a face. Most people don't know a name, so I think it's much easier to put a face next to that name in the position so that when people are looking to contact somebody, they know who they're talking about. Uh, like most other things, we don't have a $10,000 budget for headshots, so we'll be doing those ourselves. We now are proud owners of a gray backdrop and, uh, some iPhone software. So much like all of our movies that we make, uh, for $0, we'll be doing headshots that way too. So that'll be done very soon. Um, policies posted to the website, that was done on April 19th. Uh, the board was looking for an anti-bias, anti-racist policing policies. Those are in progress. Uh, general order 3.91 remains, uh, needing to be, uh, revised. We've reached out to the Gators Action League in New York City as they have a number of model policies from all over the country. They, as you may note, have been in the middle of a bit of a crisis of their own and dealing with the gay pride parade in New York City and their exclusion from that. So, uh, their executive board was a bit busy and hadn't gotten back to us, but we'll do that with others as well. Um, cell 18 require gen- uh, modification to general orders prohibiting responding to calls involving ICE unless responding to a call for service. That was completed on March 25th. Uh, other things here, there's requirements to develop a mental health homeless substance abuse crisis response mechanism. Um, I, I've had meetings with Westchester County Police, uh, Westchester County Police Chiefs along with the Department of Mental Health and Westchester County Government. There is not a plan in place at this time. There's a lot of conversation about what can be done. Um, I think that these are very, very complicated concepts that are going to require potentially millions of dollars in funding at the county level. Uh, I look forward to some solution. We've advocated for this for years. Um, we're dealing with cases on a regular basis, uh, with adult protective services, with child protective services, with, uh, Department of Mental Health, with all different agencies on, on all of the things that everybody very plainly says shouldn't be police matters. I tend to agree. So looking forward to getting some help from the county at the county level with that. Uh, looking for a co-responder element, again, that's going to require a, a complex process and that is not underway yet. Um, working with Westchester County to provide crisis intervention training for police officers, it's done at the academy level. Uh, that is a very, very large evolution in order to do it department-wide, so we're looking into options for that. Uh, but that's going to take some time to provide. Uh,
Chief, I'm sorry to interrupt. So I saw the memo that I thought was put together by two of you and there were like four or five things. And now it seems to me you're reading through that list that we created. You're going one by one, it seems to me, right?
So when you asked it was for a presentation and then Stuart had gotten an email asking for a written element.
Because I wanted to see a written presentation. May I make a suggestion here? Because you actually are going through a list. May I ask, um, trustee Lopez to share the list so that as you're discussing things, people can actually see what you're discussing, not just us. And so I, I was trying to find the right time to, to sort of interrupt. I probably let it go too long because you may have to go back. So what I, so this is a list of about 29, um, items that has been put together. Obviously, um, you know, you can't fit months of work into just, you know, um, a spreadsheet, but we did the best we could because, and we've looked at this a number of times. We've got people's names next to them, the columns on top. There's, um, two columns for notes. So let me, I would like when we present the plan going forward, uh, for anybody presenting on this plan and anybody who's got their names, is to actually refer to this list so that we can keep a running list. Omar, since you're managing the list, you want to pick it up from here since you and I both, um, are on this committee? I don't want to be the only one speaking, but if we could, I don't know what number you're on, chief, because I know you're reading through this, but this is amazingly helpful in the sense that we could start filling in the notes. And every time we have a discussion, we move things forward. We also can put notes on what needs to get done by the board or somebody else, or if you need money. So let us go through, on my, uh, it looks like it's shared, but it starts at like number 11.
Um, Right. So the chief was at number like twenty?
Twenty-one.
Oh, 21.
So, so, cell 21, I don't believe they were numbered, so I'm just going by the cell numbers.
Yeah, just, I'd sell number 21 here. I have.
So cell 22 talks about an English and Spanish explanation for police department's role with ICE. To that end, we've started Policía de Austining, which I confirmed at the PIO. To that end, we've started Policía de Austin, which I confirmed at the PIO conference is the only of its kind in the country. We are the only police department anywhere that runs Facebook pages in two lang, Facebook pages in two languages. Quite frankly, we're going to tiptoe into that conversation. Detective Chavez has a detailed strategy on how he's engaging with people and building trust before we get into certain conversations. So that's a conversation that comes up in a lot of different contexts. And he's going to wade into it there. We'll catch up to it on our side on the English page separately. Cell number twenty-three was improvements to the village's website. Again, so we're waiting for headshots to be done and we'll add our demographic and contact information, contact information and demographic information. When that goes up, as more content becomes available, we'll continue building that out. Right now, if you go to AustinPolice.com, that redirects to the village's website now. Cell twenty-four requires newer improved community policing efforts. A number of initiatives are being planned for the summer. I think that what was in the document for Matrix was a lot more complex than simply saying new community policing. And I think that it's it's not really true to the mission here because I think the police department has done an immense amount of work in terms of community policing. I think there was a very specific intent on what this was. To that end, next week we'll be doing the Know Your Right Seminar with ENU and Star Bethlehem. And I think that it was more of a targeted audience on this than necessarily doing just community outreach. So we're starting on a number of different things. That's our first. We'll start announcing more stuff as we can concrete, as we have concrete dates. Cell twenty-five requires training on interactions with the LGBTQ community. Gay Officers Action League actually hosts that training. They do it at the NYPD Academy. They travel around and conduct that training. We're looking to set them up at the Westchester County Police Academy in order to offer it to the entire county worth of police departments. As I've said before, I think that if you're going to improve policing, improving it for sixty cops out of however many thousand we have in Westchester County is, is sort of a narrow vision. I think that if we really in fact intend to change policing in Westchester County, hitting the whole county with something like that, it also would help us to share the cost. Cell twenty-six talks about increasing diversity in the hiring and promotion process. I know that the board has had an opportunity to see the video that we made through the Westchester County Police Chiefs Association. A panel discussion with each of the actors is being planned. Working with twelve different police departments poses a number of conflicts. Some of those folks work midnight, some of them work days. Days off, go around the clock as we are all twenty-four hour employees. So we have a number of other things coming up there, but we also coordinated a hundred scholarships through the Guardians, which is a Black African American support group for law enforcement, Westchester Hispanic Law Enforcement Association, New York Women in Law Enforcement. So we've done a number of different things there. That's an ongoing effort. Cell twenty-seven talks about a recruiting program at Austin High School. That's going to require authorization of the school district. So we'll be in contact with the Superintendent of Schools to to plan something there. I believe that the school board is going to end up getting involved in that conversation at some level, or at least they'll want to. Cell twenty-eight talks about a multi-year training plan. That's really the crux of this whole thing. That's a massive, massive undertaking and we're right now looking at the different trainings that are available, what they would cost and how long it will take to roll those things out. Cell twenty-nine talks about encouraging the Westchester Police Academy to implement enhanced training. As the Vice President of the Western County Chiefs Association, I sit on the training, the training committee there that discusses all these things. But ultimately, I think that if we're to really reach the level of training that I think is discussed in many of the many of the police reform plans from around New York State, it's going to require movement at the state level from Department of Criminal Justice Services in order to either extend the police academy or, or, or change the curriculum because I don't think these are things that we at the local level are really going to be changing. So we're involved in those conversations. We meet monthly with Western County Chiefs of Police, so that's, that's ongoing. And cell number thirty is assigned to the mayor, so I'll leave that one to you.
Great. That's great. So thank you for that. That's a quick update. So from a process point of view for me, and I think Omar will chime in, the reason this list was created is so that it's filled in. So this is a good start in going through all of them and it's all recorded. And I guess one way we can do this is Omar and I can go back to the recording and fill this in. My preference is by the time we discuss this plan again, that it be filled in with the people whose names are next to it. And it is true that because it's a police reform, it will involve lots of Chief Sylvester's name in row C, column C, excuse me, you roll over on this because it would make sense because it is a policing issue. So I want to go back to a few of them. There is sort of an interesting dynamic between what you can do local and what you can do beyond local. I could start from the top or from the bottom. It doesn't really matter to me. We'll go to the top. So we need to fill these in because this is an iterative process and anybody looking at it should sit there and be able to say, okay, I understand that months and months and months worth of work by many, many people that created a seventy-page document is hard to fill on a spreadsheet. But having said that, there is a way to do it so that you could at least align the different parts of the plan that was approved. And one of the caveats of this is that we are going to be discussing a plan that was approved by the Board of Trustees as representatives of the community. After months of work and committees, there's no they, there's no us, there's no me, there's no I. This was done by a committee, then the public and includes the trustees. So in cases where there are dates involved, Stuart, you could either call Omar or myself and we fill it in, or you can. But when there is like an estimated date of July, middle of July, end of July, beginning of August, it should be filled in as next steps. These things can be filled in process with dates next to them and people who follow this will see that these things change over time. Where there are multiple codes that are going to have to be changed because this allows the public and frankly, it allows the board and everybody who's in this gallery to look at this and see progress being made and specifically what is being made. It will solve for the problem that was described over and over again in how things are communicated to the public and how difficult it is for the public to follow so much of what its government and their representatives do. So we are trying to simplify. We may have oversimplified. But I actually think writing a short story is so much more difficult than writing a novel. And so kudos to Omar Lopez for putting but all of the members of the board who participated in going through this, rereading, rereading and trying to bring it down to what it is. So we could go through the whole thing. It's got in pro, in process and progress. And I think Omar, that's because that's one of the values that you could just easily copy. You went through all of this. It's more than in process. The next steps, there's enough room in there to write things like this will happen by this and this time. There, I think we added another column. So I would appreciate that people whose names are their lead. It doesn't mean that you have to work on it, just so the public can understand. And the public should not call Stuart Cahon or Chief Sylvester and say, recommendation number two, where are you with that? That's not the purpose of this. The purpose of this is to have a working plan of how we want to look at the progress being made because I think it is the role and responsibility. And we had a lot of discussion about this. That the oversight of the implementation is to be done by members of the Board Trustee. That's what we took on. We had lots of conversation about it. So that's what we're taking. And I think that lots of work has been done. Omar, I don't know if you want to look and we could do this together at and listen to the recording or if you want to go through it now.
So I'm happy, because I've been following as the, the chief.
I see that.
So I'm happy to, each one of these has updates that they've already vocalized. So I'm happy to go back after the meeting and fill it in. I have a few comments. First, grateful to you, Stuart and you, Chief Sylvester, for going through the updates. To me, one of the big headlines is how much progress we've been able to make in this short amount of time already with many of these initiatives. If it's something that is within our control as a village, whether it's changing legislation or something having to do with the policy change, it happened really, really quickly. Whether I see Corporation Council working on documents or I pretty much the next day to take the specific recommendation around ICE, I, there was a language very soon after the, the plan was sent to Albany, that, that language was changed in, in the police code. And I, right away, we're seeing those changes. So grateful to the chief and Corporation Council for moving so quickly. Number two, I, the, I think what would be helpful is that once I fill this in, I'm happy to share it with Jamie so she can post a version of this to our website. I'll create, I'll make a PDF or something like that. It's easy for people to see. So that they can see as of June twenty twenty-one, here's where we stand with implementation. And you'll be able to see how many of these pieces are already done or in motion. And that'll help to answer a lot of the questions that the community has. Number three is I, there are a number of these pieces and, and the chief mentioned them that have to do with other bodies, whether it's the schools and the Board of Education, whether it's the county and other municipalities, whatever it is. Those are going to be trickier in order to implement. They have a longer time horizon. And nevertheless, we'll give updates just the same. But I think over time, what we'll start to do, particularly after, I think it's around September, or so if memory serves, that Corporation Council said that we'll have all of this language ready to go and have, we'll be able to vote on it. That's what we'll be able to sort out. Here are the recommendations which we have already implemented or passed. And then here are the ones that are left to do. And then that way we can focus our attention on the ones that are left to do that are, that are longer term. For the ones that do involve the mayor and the Board of Trustees or other bodies, whether it's staff working with other agencies, with other municipalities, that's where I will, we'll be able to provide updates on the sheet to see where things are. But I, for the most part, you'll be able to see exactly where things stand with this document. And the very last thing is, there was also, with the very last recommendation here is around the Implementation Committee. And the original conversation around what implementation should look like, folks can go right into the report and see exactly what that language says. Which is, the recommendation was, hey, you already have the Working Committee, which is a cross-section of our community that is, has work on this plan. Why don't you use that as either a foundation or as the Implementation Committee to then go on and I help advise it and move implementation forward. And then one of the observations that we've had, as I, that the chief and Corporation Council and others have started already moving these pieces forward, is that many of them are either legislative in nature. And as such, Corporation Council is working on that language and then I will be presenting it and we have a process for public engagement or our policy changes that the chief is implementing and we can update folks on. But it wasn't exactly clear what is going to be the role of the Implementation Committee. They're not the ones actually implementing the changes. It would be kind of an advisory committee and in that way, it was still not super clear what the role would be. I, I would not say that it's off the table for there to be an implementation committee. It just hasn't been immediately clear what the exact role is given how exactly implementation of these reforms is working. Nevertheless, our principles stay the same. We are primarily concerned with wanting to implement all of the recommendations here, which we have committed to. We want to do so in a way that is working hand in hand with our police department, with our staff, with our community, because the police department are the ones that are implementing a lot of these reforms. And the Corporation Council are the ones that are helping to change the policies that we then are then going to vote on. And all that is done with feedback from the community and in response to what we've heard from the community. And wanting to have all of those folks at the table, wanting to have all of those voices as part of this process is really important to us. We don't want to do any of this as a silo. And so I, wanting to move forward in a way that is effective, efficient and actually going to get these things done is really what we want to do. And eager to hear any comments from fellow trustees and then ultimately the, the public as well, once we post these updates on the website.
Before we, we get to that, thank you, if I may. I want to make just a couple of, we went from the macro. I want to go a little bit deeper into things. There are a few pieces on here that were discussed in depth and breadth by the committee. And I want to go back to intentions because, and I think the chief correctly mentioned a number of them, but I do want to go back to seventeen, which is policies and procedures with the LGBTQ policy. There was significant conversation and we put Christina Picciano's name next to that. We need to reach out to her and she's been busy with other things and all that. But chief, one of the things here is that it may be true that to do a policy change like that for sixty officers, it's actually, I think fifty-four or so with the staffing here in Austin. And that went back and forth, but at the end, we don't always have so much say in outside of our community. And it was agreed upon that we would reach out to her. If she can't do it, she's too busy. We'll put that in the notes. She'll give us a date when she's not busy or she'll give us maybe contacts. And I would appreciate if you either reach out to her. If not, I can do it for number seventeen and actually move that forward. Even if it's just our community, for me, that was discussed and the board, it would be better if the entire county, frankly, it would be better if the whole state did something regarding that.
That was number seventeen. That was.
Which one was that for?
That was a training topic I was talking about.
Okay, so I'm going to go back to seventeen. If that wasn't, I apologize. But if we can go back to seventeen, I'd like to, for you to be the caller. And if not, you just let me know. It's fine. You'll have to do it in this meeting. Just let me know and I'll call her. And we can move forward on that because that went through quite a bit of discussion that members of our public are happy to help with putting that together. One of the things about this plan, while never mandated by the governor, was done in, in my opinion, is more of a punitive way. If you don't do any of this, we will stop your funding. That's not my style. My style is common ground. If we can get some members of our public to say, yeah, I'll help with this. I'm, you know, we're not asking to join a committee. We're asking them, we're asking individuals to work hand in hand if possible. And if they have the time and the wherewithal. So number seventeen, I think you just let me know after the meeting if you want to call her or I'll call her. And if we could assign someone to, to work with her, because I think she actually did raise her hand. So that was one of the things. Thanks you Omar for talking about the committee. That was an important piece because we wanted to see this presentation as well before we went on to next step, the Police Academy. So the Police Academy is a really interesting conversation and I want to reiterate that I've actually met with a number of groups about the police reform, where we are, et cetera. I like trustee Lopez. Think we've done a lot. We handed this in in April and we have many, many major initiatives, multi-year initiatives in fact. And so to also do this and already get things that are done and already move forward on a number of initiatives, I think is, is really great progress. The Westchester Police Academy for me, and I said this at a meeting, my name is not actually next to that one, number twenty-nine. But I think it is for the next twenty years going to be the most formative and important aspect of policing is when the place that teaches police officers how to police makes some changes in how it does that. And really reflects upon how it's training the next generation of cops in our communities. I think it's worth the work. And I personally would like to reach out to some of the people at the county level if I can, to have that conversation going. Because if I want to have the best doctors in a community or the best doctors in a country, I would ask that the medical schools revisit how they teach the future doctors, how to behave, what to learn, how to do surgeries. That's where you would go to get the next great generation. So I think that's actually a very important aspect. But it is large. It's huge. It's got a lot of depth. It's got a lot of levers. It's a heavy lift. My name's not next to that, but I think it's one of the most important things that we can do for all of our communities. That's sort of just my spiel, if you will. So if others on the board, please share some thoughts and information. I really appreciate the presentation and we will also have to decide when we're getting a follow-up presentation so that it's calendared amongst the many things that we look at. We could take this piece off unless the board wants it on, so we can go back to the gallery format. Thank you. Any other comments? From you as well, Stuart, if you want to comment. It's not, you know, it's our first official presentation. So I didn't mean just the trustees, you as well. No commentary?
I guess I could.
Not, I'm not forcing the commentary. It's just that I want to make sure I'm seeing everyone. That's really legitimately asking if anybody has any comments.
No, thank you, Mayor. And, and I do appreciate that. And, you know, I want to give credit to pretty much you and Omar and the chief and store because you, you guys. because you guys have been the ones who have been literally working on this a hundred percent. You know, I think the rest of us have been doing some feedback. At least I can speak for myself. I don't want to speak for the rest of the board, obviously. I'm sure Dan and Bob have done all this stuff, you know, I think, but you know, I have a lot of, you know, I have not done as much work as you and Omar have done on behalf of the board. So thank you. I guess just a general question, sure. And I think Mayor, you mentioned something in regards to, you have spoken to all the municipalities, all the members throughout the county. So are we ahead of all these policies and all these changes that, you know, some of them, we already, as the chief said, we already, we've been doing a lot of this stuff. So is it something that we are ahead of all the municipalities? Or what, what has been your perception, I guess, of what they're doing in regards to this?
So this is my sense of things regarding police reform. The county has its own thing going on, and I think they've put together commissions. Every plan is actually quite different. You wouldn't think that amongst fifty-five municipalities that you'd get fifty-five different plans, but there are big differences. I think we're pretty far along. I think others have created commissions, the civilian review boards. We already had one. Really, our job from our plan was to simply change something that existed, and we're going to have to codify it. Others are actually spending a lot of time building those commissions. That's what they're spending, to me, from the ones that I've spoken to. I'm going to have to say this, though. I do work in New Rochelle and Scarsdale, because I'm on the border and I'm very in touch with the mayors there for a whole bunch of reasons, and this is one of them. The cities are quite different. The way cities train their police, the way the cities manage, a place with two hundred thousand people like Yonkers functions very differently than what we are. But amongst the villages and towns, we're like a little bit ahead of the pack, but this is not a race. Because truthfully, they're all so different. I did speak to Briar Cliff, you know, they had a few meetings. Their plan is just really different. So it's like an apples, oranges, and grapefruit comparison. There just isn't one. I'm happy with where we are, to the extent that there will be a group where you'll say, you're not working fast enough. There'll be a group that will want to redo, right? They'll say, well, you know, it's not just the plan you approved. I want this added, and this added, and this added. And that happens in all the plans. But I think a lot has been done. And I do think that some of the things that have been done and people didn't know were being done. And that came out in the committee, by the way, that worked on this, needs to be, not only codified, needs to be communicated in writing in some sort of plan. So the people have a place to go to and say, okay, I get it. We asked for this, it actually was already sort of happening. I get it, I see it, I understand, I'm going to move on. And so I think that's part of what we have to do. I think we're in a good spot, Manny. I, truthfully, some of the bigger issues that the chief mentioned, those are the big ones to crack. And a village like ours is not going to do it on its own. On one hand, different villages have different demographics, different makeups, different needs, different staffing, all sorts of different. So we'll see.
I do appreciate, and you're correct. I mean, you know, for what I have read, some of the plans from the municipalities, they're like a totally different range of things. But it's, and I'm happy, and obviously I'm happy that we are, it's not like we, someone did something and we stopped and we haven't done anything. You know, to me, this is very helpful to actually see, to show the community that we have. And I say we, because I think it's a group, that for sure is all of us, that have been working on this. And you know, this progress happening right now, they may not see it, but it's actually a lot of things, a lot, a lot, things are happening. So I thank you, like I said, I thank you, and I thank Omar in behalf, at least on the board perspectives, and obviously the chief and Stuart, and everybody else that's been helping with this on the village level. So thank you. I don't have any questions right now.
I mean, I appreciate the credit, and Omar and I have continued. But truthfully, as you can see on the list, Chief Sylvester, Stuart Cahan's name. I think Jamie's on one or two things because of my thing about communication and how we need to improve the website. I think the village manager, but truthfully, they've been doing a lot of the heavy lifting. And I do appreciate the kudos. And I think we're much more about making sure that the oversight on behalf of the board, because we generally assign two people to different initiatives, is being implemented. And that really is sort of what's coming out in this, in this conversation. Anybody else?
One quick response that I have here, what Deputy Mayor just commented on, was, this goes back to a comment that our village manager made a million years ago, which is, we don't get a lot of emails saying, someone picked up my trash and I put it out, and it was great. That's it, right? They're not commenting on all the things that go well, which are so many things in the village. And I think one of the, in some ways, one of the unfortunate parts about this. So the chief put out, for example, all this data on what's been going on in the village in 2020, arrest data and on all kinds of things. And we really haven't heard much from the public with respect to that data. And in part, it's because it reinforces what we've been saying, that arrests are generally pretty low. There isn't evidence that there is some sort of racial discriminatory pattern that we're seeing in our arrests. The patterns that we are seeing in, when you do break down racial groups and what predominantly racial groups are being arrested for, there's a plan to try to address those kinds of things. They tend to be, what percentage of them tend to be the police officers going out and either ticketing or arresting people for various things versus responding to calls? You know, this is like really super helpful data that reinforces what's going well in the village. And you don't get a lot of John Krasinski, good news coming out when things are going well. And so that's a little bit of a shame. I want to highlight that, because this is about reform, reinvention, make it better, improve, improve. And let's also point out when things are going well. It's a little bit corny and like nobody wants to be the, everybody, it's, you get a lot of credit when you say, are you into Erin Brockovich, call out the injustice, like you're against the, you know, like you get a lot of credit for that. You don't get a lot of credit necessarily for saying like, you know, the things are going well. But it's also real. And so as we work towards making a more perfect unit and ultimately a better Police Department, part of that is also acknowledging what's going well.
Thank you. Dana, anything? Again, I'm not forcing people to talk. I just, you know me, I'm going around the gallery, I don't have Stuart presented. We did get that memo, he wants to go back and reiterate, I'm not forcing people to have something to say. I am simply asking to make sure that people have the opportunity.
A question, how are we going to going forward? Are we reengaging members of the community on a new and form a new sort of implementation task force type group? Or I noticed that was on the list at the bottom. And you know, what do you, what do you think? I mean, I don't know.
Well, for me, right now, I'm not thinking anything beyond, I wanted to see this presentation. How can I draw conclusions and what the next steps are without seeing where we are? So now I see sort of, you know, and I, we're going to fill in more blanks, of where we are. Individually, as I do as mayor, as all of you do, we speak to people all the time. I have reached out to a handful of people, and I believe with Omar. And we're asking some questions of what the scope, what makes sense, and to look at the next steps. So this is our first presentation. You know, we're in the second day of June. We handed this to the governor on the first day of April. We're talking a couple of months here. And already six, more than half dozen things are already in progress. So now I've got to mul this over and say, okay, what's right, go. But I am speaking as if we built, most of whom were on the committee, a few, just to get a sense, if you will. A temperature gauge, I also thought it would be helpful to have this to show the list. We'll fill it in more, we'll share it with some of them, and then we will regroup the board. And we will sit there and say, okay, folks, I will look to all of you, village manager, chief Sylvester. I actually think the email I sent out to a handful of people that I did include the chief on there, because he is actually a part of the original committee. And, and one person or so that isn't on the committee. Actually, I've met with a group of people that, some of whom were not on the committee, who have thought about this. I think one of them's actually in the attendee list, and said I would get back to them, but I needed to see tonight. I'm going to give it some thought, Omar, you guys, and we'll go through next steps on that one. In addition to what Omar has already said about that line item. Okay, I do think one of the things is that we have to schedule this, Karen, because you and I do a lot of scheduling for both the work sessions and the legislative. And this has to be sort of scheduled in amongst the many initiatives that we have regarding housing. And that's the only one that's come to mind, but the comp plan and all of these other multi-layered things that, as I said to someone, each are super important and the most important to different people. They're all important initiatives. So is there anything else before we move on? Okay. I do have a continuing business, which I probably should not surprise people with, but I'm going to do it anyway. By, in the next two weeks, can we just get an update somewhere on the agenda about the Villet Seal and where that project is? Since it's been discussed, and I know that we have talked to us trustees, but for people who follow us, I just want to put it out there that we need to step back into that. And if the artist is not available, either find out when he is. And if he's not, we might have to move to somebody else. But if I could just sort of raise my hand and ask that we focus on that a little bit more as we go through the year. That was my only other thing for continuing. Any other questions before we move on to new business? Not seeing any hands. Oh, excuse me?
Question, probably a question that should have been, this is for the village manager, that I should have asked during updates. But one of the questions, one of the things that is coming up is, CDC guidelines is making it so that folks that are vaccinated don't have to wear masks in a lot of contexts. If you could just clarify, village manager, what are the contexts under, in which people should be wearing masks here in the village?
So we're adhering to a bit more of a conservative stance on that. So in village buildings and public areas, at this point, we are still asking people vaccinated or unvaccinated to wear masks, to wear masks when they enter the buildings. We don't really have any way, and we don't really necessarily want to start asking people whether they're vaccinated or not. And, you know, so right now, we're still screening. And we are still making sure people are wearing masks when they come into the building, they're being asked to wear masks. And when employees are in public areas, they're asked to wear masks as well.
You have, and I didn't look at the website, I apologize, because I read what came down, I guess, Friday before Memorial Day about camps and a lot of the issues there. Are we informing? I'm sure the answer is yes, but as far as outside and inside, it might be important to get that out. And I'm happy to share that in the mayor's update, because more and more people are simply not wearing masks.
Right. Yeah, well, we have, you know, we've posted that we do have the information out. It is subject to change, so by next week, we may have different information.
Right.
But right now, you know, we're just erring on protecting people. It's a little bit different at the community center, depending on whether people are engaging in an activity and things. But we're just trying to, at least when people are entering buildings, you know, whether it's to go to the clerk's office, whether it's just walking into the building to go to a program here at the rec center, that, you know, as you're entering the building, you're still following a COVID protocol.
Okay, thank you. My kids are still not vaccinated, and we have lots of kids, so. Okay. We are up to new business of the board. Throwing it back at you, Martha, that was my subtle hint of, that's your thing.
Is there any new business of the board? Nope, okay. Is there anybody here who would like to address the board on issues not related to the agenda, but irrelevant to the common good of the village?
I'm not seeing any hands right now.
Okay. Then can I have a motion in a second to adjourn the public meeting?
Do we have anything Stuart to go into for exec? I don't remember.
We do not.
I'm sorry?
We do not.
We do, amazing. All righty.
So just a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
That was the quickest vote we had tonight. I'm just going to say that out loud and put it out there. Martha?
Hey, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Nope, okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for for joining us tonight. We are adjourned.